4.2, we have the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department giving the 2022 report by Chief Matt Ohad. Mr. Ohad.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, thank you for your time. Everyone in the audience, thank you. What I'll be presenting tonight is just a State of the Union, State of the Department address. It's going to be a review of last year and the projects that we're going to be going forward into the following year. If anyone has any questions or anything that you have any statements or concerns about, please ask. So, let me, here we go. So, our first year, just reviewing by the numbers, our total call volumes are busiest year yet with 1,613 calls. 60% was inside the city, 40% was outside of the city, and 25% of our total call volume was medical. Our average en route time, and that is from the time our pager goes off to the time that we have a truck en route, across those 1,600 calls is 2 minutes and 21 seconds. That's a, that's a really incredible number. I have a hard time truly impressing on what that number really means to the city and to our citizens. The national standard for paid fire departments is 90 seconds, and you're at 2 minutes and 21 seconds with a volunteer department. It's a truly incredible number, and it takes a lot from the organization and from the city to be able to get that number to happen, and we'll talk more about that. Our average apparatus en route time from once we're en route to on scene is 5 minutes. So ideally, an average throughout the year, what you have is from the time that we've gone en route, or from the time our pagers are toned out to the time that we're on scene, we're there in less than 9 minutes. It's closer to 8. Average time on scene throughout the year was just 22 minutes and 35 seconds. And then just a real simple breakdown of what our call type in the city was for the year. And on our little bar graph, you'll see some very large bars and some small ones. Our call type for the year was across grass fires, medicals, car accidents, and fire alarms. That's going to be the giant bulk of our actual call volume going across all of our calls.
Hey, Matt?
Yes?
Could I ask you on that structure fire, you got 118. Do you know how many were in the city compared to the county?
I do. It's in my other, much more bigger breakout, and I can review that and come back to it in just a second.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, I can tell, I do know the number off the top of my head for working structure fires in the city, and it was 30. It was 30. Now, what we get toned out to is a structure fire may not be a structure fire when we get there, but when we're on scene, a working structure fire in town was 30 this year.
Okay.
And that is commercial and residential.
Thank you.
Some extra numbers to focus on this year. We ended the year with a total membership of 60. Of those 60 members, each and every one of them combined responded to 10,564 calls. So that's what the call volume looks like distributed across the membership. Total hours on scene by the membership was 9,655 hours. And very specifically, average number of firefighter response by call type, and this number reflects the average number of people on that scene. And I've highlighted commercial structure fires with 12 individuals, and that's an average, residential structure fires of 9, vehicle accidents of 7, and I want to highlight alarms with no fire, 6, because every time that alarm goes off, you have to treat it as the real deal. You have to. And it's very rare that it is, but that's the call that's one that always worries me in our organization, because that's the call that you can really burn people out, because they're going to show up, nothing's going on. They're going to show up, nothing's going on. And to be able to have a good, healthy number of 6 people responding to that call continuously throughout the year, that's a very good number. Now, looking at our 2021, 22 funding sources, the numbers are a touch small up there, but the bulk of our budget, $650,000, was from the city. There's $80,000 that represents donations, monetary donations, they're, sorry, county subsidy, that's from Hood County provided to us. There's, the monetary donations was 23,700. Total in grants collected for the year was 38,000, and equipment and PPE donations was another 80,000. And you can look at our little simple pie chart here, and 75% of the burden for funding the department is on the citizens and the city, and we've managed this year to get 25%. And that's, that's a good haul for us for this year. A lot of this has been with our networking, particularly on the equipment. We've had very good friends in other career departments that have donated PPE, which has been very, very difficult for everyone in the United States to get this year. And it's not that the city didn't contribute to that. They did very heavily. And we've also had a donation of rescue equipment this year that was very high. And rescue equipment, the, think of them as the jaws of life. That equipment can be very expensive also. The PPE donation came from Trophy Club and the, Graham, not, yeah, Granberry, and the rescue equipment also came from Granberry. So those two departments donated to us PPE and extrication equipment. Is there any questions particularly on this slide? Okay. And again, just breaking down a little bit more on the donations. The cash donations from our citizens collected throughout the year was the 23,700. And a major contributing factor to that is when we had the wildfires this summer, the Big L fire particularly out west of town. We're very fortunate in the community in the area that we live in. That event was very public. It was very well-known, particularly to everyone in the area. And when there's a call for help, the community does provide. And there was a colossal amount of resources and money and just straight donations that came into our organization. Mr. Kaufman and Mayor Jarrett, both were up at the station for that particular day when it was coming out, and they saw what it looked like with just the colossal amount of stuff and people that were coming in and out of Station 1. And obviously, the fire was on the far west side of the county. And again, just highlighting the tools and PPE donations from Trophy Club and Granberry. Grants and reimbursements, this is something that we have been working hard on. Our office manager, Heather Walls, has been very helpful with this. Obviously, the Big L fire, again, we've talked about that that was a very public event, but total reimbursements off the grant, the Big L fire, was $14,900. Heather was able to help lower our VFIS premium, which is our insurance, to $12,200. And then Pump Operations class is a class that we had reimbursed back to us from the state. Texas Farm Bureau was just a donation that we had requested through their organization. And then getting various training reimbursements through TEACs and using House Bill 2604 has gotten us $6,581. And the total reimbursement since 2020 is $78,000. We have several more grants that we're looking at for this year. The grants are always going to be competitive. For volunteer, we can be able to get, there's extra grants that are set out there for us, and we're already looking at trying to put together packets to get more of a grant grab out there and get more exposure on the grant side. There's a lot of work that I think that our organization, we can do on that side, too. So, training for 2022, it's a number I'm really proud of our training captain, Jesse Slaughter, and all the help that he provided this year to the organization. And no matter how awesome Jesse is, ultimately, the membership's the one that is going to represent if the training is appreciated. And this year, across our membership, we had 2,750 hours of training across the department as a whole. It's an average of 67 hours per member. And on top of that, we had two rookie academies this year, and that's the new members that come into our organization, and we provide their training. We also have that training extended to the neighboring county departments. And through those two programs, or two academies this year, we've managed to push about almost 70 people through fire training this year. The training is not just something that's shot from the hip and you show up to. It's a state program. It's organized. It is recognized. And if you follow through, all the way through the very last steps of it, our training can take you to certifications and ultimately into people's careers. Obviously, not everyone in our department takes it for their firefighting career, and for that, it's just our continuing education. And just kind of a review for the call volume for the year. We had a lot of unusual weather events for 2022. 22 started off very cold, then we got hot, then we burned, and then there at the very end of the year, we got cold again, and we had a rash of a bunch of frozen sprinkler pipes again. Our standard call volume was as projected and expected. We had about a 10% increase, and it's been almost like clockwork every year, 10% increase. If we take this number and tack it on the wall and come back and look at it a year, you can take our 1,600 calls and add 10% to it, and that's where we'll be at next year. The benefit of being able to have a number that consistent is it makes our budgeting easier. There's certain things that do come at a fixed increase that we can calculate into our budgeting process off of that. The building construction in Granberry has been consistent throughout the year, and we've had our normal call volume with that. And as everyone always kind of squeaks about, it's the traffic accidents and traffic. That's the one thing that we have had a significant bump in is our actual traffic accidents. And it's not just in the city proper. It is also up and down 377. There's been a pretty bad year on 377 from an accidents point of view. Quick review of just our budget from last year. We had no major surprises. We fully transitioned in using ESO solutions. It's a program that we use for several different facets. It's maintenance, it's organization, it's just equipment tracking, and it's a fantastic resource. We also use it for writing down the narratives that are required for our calls. And it's took about three or four other scattered programs that we had across the department and combined it all into one front provided through one company. And ESO's just been fantastic for us. Talking about our capital requests coming into this year from last year, our ISO consultant, Mike Peach, ISO consultant's going to give us not only our five and our 10-year roadmap for the city and a fire department, but it really, it goes way beyond that. And I'm very excited for Mike to be coming in and helping with an evaluation and giving us the coaching and learning and evaluation for our organization to help us present for the city to plan for the future a lot easier. The ISO consultant should be in town, if I'm correct, March 13th. That's when he's coming in. The other major capital request that we've been working on, and it was talked about earlier, was the radio project. And we are chugging along right there on that front right now. We've got all of our ducks in a row for that project for when it does come in line. As typical with the budget stuff, everyone got whacked over the head with the supply and demand issues. Supply and demand on the fire side was particularly bad. A very good example of this is if our new tower truck, the one that came in 2019, took 10 months from order to delivery. If you ordered that truck today, 2 years. And that's getting worse. It's something that I've been talking about with Mr. Ross a lot, and it's not just us. Everyone's getting just hammered on this, and I truly understand it. There's some good news on this front, some of the other obscure things that we would order that's not commonly ordered across the U.S. Fire hose used to be almost a year out from the time you ordered it. Now it's only 6 months. So they're finally starting to bring some of the supply and demand issues back into check. But that's not only a challenge for us, but that's a challenge for every department. Major projects for '22 and the growth into 2023. Membership growth is one of the single most important key factors to our organization. The easiest way to determine the health of our organization, or I would argue any volunteer fire department, is do you have people? Because if you do, you've already done the hard part. Because having people in your organization is difficult for any volunteer organization, and we've managed to grow. And when I first became chief, our active roster, total roster was 39 people. We're at 60 now. Doesn't seem like much, but being able to grow 11 people across the organization, particularly with the economic fronts that we've had and the economic issues that we're facing now, and to still be able to grow, I'm really proud of what our organization's been able to accomplish on that front. Another major factor for '22 for our department was the creation of our Board of Directors and in the inclusion particularly of our three citizen board members. I have grand plans and high hopes with our citizen board members. They help provide oversight to the organization, and they also help just generally provide accountability from our organization to the community. And the full intent with our citizen board members is to use them and utilize them not only for their insight and their expertise, but also just as an ambassador for the organization to our community. Another thing that we've had created this year is our GVFD Support Brigade, and that is just a support division that helped literally support the organization. In historical past, it's always been associated with a women's brigade, women's support group. And we have a lot of people in Granberry that maybe don't want to necessarily participate in the firefighting side of the department, but they want to support the organization. And with the creation of this group, this gives other people that aren't interested in the emergency services side, but still be able to actually provide community service to their, their local community through our organization. And then ultimately, the creation of our GVFD.org website and the help of the city's communication team in helping us recruit. Those two things created have, is one of those factors that really helped us increase membership this year. The easiest way to describe it is we used to get, on average, one to two applications every quarter. Right now, we're getting two to five every month. Now, there's still a background check, and they ultimately still have to get through the process to get on the organization, but we've met our obligations and requirements to try and reach out into the community to let everyone know, hey, we exist, and we're here to help you, and you can help us. And the combination of the communications team and our websites actually been really instrumental in just the last about two and a half quarters for the growth of the organization. I want to thank our citizen board members from 2022, and that was Richard Hayes, Tony Mobley, and Tony Hedges. Again, it was, when we recruited them to our organization, it was the first time we'd done it. And it took a little bit to kind of get everyone figured out, like what exactly what was everyone's role with this was going to be. And I appreciate their patience and their time and their help. They've been instrumental for the help of the organization. We just recently had our elections in January. I'm pleased to announce that Richard is back and Dr. Hedges is back, and we're hoping to introduce Mrs. Fay Landham to our group very soon, too. So she'll be on our board hopefully in February. Looking forward to 2023, through the help of our board and our membership's approval and the county subsidy, the department had purchased a new Kenworth tanker at the very end of December of '22. And this truck is going to significantly help supplement not only our city, not in a mainline function. No, the city's provided plenty of apparatus, tools, and equipment for our direct and immediate needs here in the city. This truck's going to help us in the event that there's an emergency for a need of a tanker in the city, but primarily for our mutual aid agreements to the neighboring departments around us and into our ETJ, the direct belt directly around us. Want to just talk quickly about our Support Brigade. One of the bigger functions for our Support Brigade is when they came to me and wanted to create the brigade, the first thing they approached me about was fundraising. And fundraising is something, I don't want to say I've always found difficult, but it is a challenge. Because if you had to tell me to pick, I need you to go to over 1,500 calls a year or raise money. Pick your time. Well, at the end of the day, we need the money, but you also need people to respond to the calls. And since we are volunteer, we have to pick somewhere. And the advantage of having the brigade and a group of individuals that's specifically interested in helping the organization raise money and also help take pressure off of the city is phenomenal, and that's amazing. And two of the projects that the brigade had been talking about was a dedicated, I'm going to call it a Polaris or a side-by-side or Gator. And that piece of equipment is kind of niche, but it would very specifically fill a role for a need. And think of like the Granberry bike path. Fire trucks don't go down the bike path too well. They don't go down railroad tracks too well. You have some other tight areas. In the event that you're on the square, you can use the apparatus down there and not take up 14 parking, parking places on the square. Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. And the other piece of equipment they were looking at was a dedicated fire boat on the lake. After some discussion and some preliminary thought process, it looks like, and it's pretty much a go, what the brigade's going to go for is the smaller vehicle first. And one of the main reasons for that is with them being brand new and coming out of the gate swinging, I would like them to find success as early as fast as possible. And going with the smaller project, in my personal opinion, is the easier way to go. That said, I think it's critical that I don't mess up their idea. If they have a project, go tackle it. Because the last thing they need is coming to our organization saying, we want to do this for you, and then be, no. But we do have to also consider on what can easily be achieved and what is going to ultimately be the greatest use for our city and our area. And that's just a small part of the brigade. One of the things they're starting to do to start off their fundraiser is they have a, I'm going to have to give a shameless plug real quick. February 18th, they are having their first fundraiser at Station 1, and it's a spaghetti dinner. And we'll be putting out an announcement on that further down the road also. And the spaghetti dinner will be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. But again, that's at Station 1, February 18th. And the Support Brigade can also turn into something that can help us with community outreach and help us with Fire Prevention Month and really help us get our foot and name out there in a much broader capacity while still being able to easily consider covering the calls coming up that we know will be there in the future. And it's ultimately just to try and create a bigger awareness net throughout not only our organization and our local community, but just throughout the entire business of Granberry and the governments of Granberry, and to get it to be known that we have multi-facets that we can be there to help with. One of the major things going forward for this coming year for us is going to be building on our training. If our full intent is to have a heavy year on recruiting and bringing more people into the department, training's going to be critical to that. And one of the couple of things that we've been looking at and working on is SFMA, which is, think of it as our, our school. That is the government entity that provides us the outline of what we need to be trained in and our path to certification. SFMA has been kind of a doormat for the last couple of years. The organization's really struggled, and they've had a hard time getting their portals and their programs updated. They finally got them up. And doing that, we'll be able to document everyone's training. And then, again, out the backside of that is certifications. So it's not just people training saying they're doing a good thing. You're actually having state-certified training. That state-certified training is equivalent to what they would have at a TCFP academy. It's the exact same. Career firefighters and volunteers are trained the exact same way. It's the exact same stuff. One of the bigger things that we've been working on is reviving our District 16. And my training lieutenant and station lieutenant, Donnie Hurd, who's also a captain at Trophy Club and a lead instructor at TCC, has swallowed the sword on trying to take over and help our poor district. Our poor district, it needs a ton of help. It's a colossal project. The best thing about it is, is with us doing a quasi-hostile takeover of our district, is that we can start actually bringing what we think needs to be brought to attention, not only for our city and our county, but our district, and bring it to Granberry, and bring these classes and conventions and events into the city. And we can possibly, in a short amount of time, actually be, not a major, but a small revenue source for the city. Will it offset our budget? Unfortunately, not. But it is something that we, we're acknowledging the commitment that the city has to us, and we're trying to figure out a way to help offset that and give a commitment back to the city. And again, it's not just the fire service side of it. It's how else are we committed to our community? And trying to build programs like that to help build the city's local businesses is one of those ways that we can do that. Another major project for us is getting our training field officially recognized by TEACs or the state. And it's the attempt to try and get the state where, and we've already have the fee schedule set up where other entities can come in and use our training field at a fee. Again, having the state golden seal of approval on it is just another factor of helping to generate that extra revenue. There's a couple of different challenges in with that. I'm not going to go into all of them right now, but it is, it's a long-term solution that the city's invested in the department through a training field. And that training field, though primarily used through our organization, it can be utilized in other facets. We've had Lockheed Martin in the past. We had a private company, I think it was Protecto Burn. They were up there for a little bit while they were building a, a local business project that they had had. So it's, it's not completely off the radar, but there is a potential to continue to, more development into the future on the training field. One of the more incredible things that I've learned is trying to figure out our strategic 10-year plan. And I'm getting very close to being able to present that to the city. It's taken me a long time to build it. And I need a few more weeks, maybe a little longer than that, but it's something that I would love to present to city management and let them definitely contribute to and truly see where we can take the department in the long run. I truly believe emphatically that there's no reason that Granberry can't be perpetual volunteer fire department. There's no reason, okay? There are very, very large volunteer fire departments, not only in Texas, but on the East Coast. But the trick to that is ultimately communication between the city and the organization, and everyone having a true, emphatic, indefensible understanding of where we are going and how we are going to get there. And that's the plan with the 10-year strategic plan. I truly believe that with the ISO consultant, Mike Peach, coming in, he's going to literally give us the roadmap for what the department will look like at year five or year 16. give us the roadmap for what the department will look like at year five or year 50. He'll give us that. And part of that's contributed to the fact that the city limits are officially, through state law, just locked. We know what the city's going to look like, and you know that eventually you're going to reach a certain cap as far as growth. Don't get me wrong, it will always be growing, but we won't be necessarily having double-digit growth every single year. And that's the physical asset part of the organization, but the mystery, and sometimes the questionable part, is the membership. And that's what this strategic plan builds on, is the membership, is the people. And it is a plan that is, and I've got it lightly highlighted there, membership engagement, community service, and involvement in health and safety. And there's a lot more to it than just those three lines and three subbullets. But our ability to build the people within the organization and have the organization at a level of where it is self-sustaining through its own membership-building programs, officer development, community enhancement, community communication, public education, and to make that bedrock part of the organization, where it's a fundamental part of the organization, where a new member comes in at day one, they understand that this is how we will build, grow, and develop that individual, and they'll take it as far as they want. It's up to them to see how far do they want to go? Do they just want to remain a firefighter? Do they want to actually get into the public education side? Do they want to try and become an officer? Or if they're a lunatic and try and become chief eventually? But I'm getting very close to the 10-year, getting the 10-year plan complete, and I'm very excited to be presenting that. And very lastly, just a personal thanks for myself, not only to my membership. The biggest thing that I can ever tell anyone is there's not a single thing that I've done in Granberry that's worth mentioning without the membership. There's nothing I've done without them. And the support that I have from the membership is truly colossal, and they have embraced the idea of being a volunteer. And it is as much of them as they breathe air, and that's a rare commodity in people to have commitment to work as hard as they do and to still be able to do it day in, day out, and year after year. I also really particularly want to thank several city employees that have been a major help to me, and also apologize for the aggravation I've caused them throughout the year. Heather Walls, our office manager, has been just fantastic. She's done a lot for us. It's hard for her, because at the end of the day, you have 60 people. There's no specific schedule. We walk in, some of us want things, some of us forgot something, but we all ask her for help. And Heather has been a fantastic benefit for us. Mr. Ross, thank you. Mr. Crownover, and your help and my random questions that I send out to you. Ava Gregory, Pat Stewart, Roy Robertson, Christie Russell, Kevin Jones, and the communications team, Jeff and Chuck. I appreciate it. You guys have been a great help. I know that you guys sometimes get wondering, when I send an email to you, and you're like, where did this come from? I assure you, it's not intentional when I do it to you. Thank you for everyone's time, and does anyone have any questions?
I did ask, or was wondering about, does the airport require any special equipment? And if so, do we have it?
The airport right now, when it'll require special equipment is when it becomes a Class D airport. Fancy term. It's when you have a control tower. The second you have a control tower is the second that the fire protection changes for the airport. As it sits right now, we, our equipment and the apparatus that we have can easily protect the airport. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't have a major disaster there and it still ultimately be bad, okay? But the equipment and tools and apparatus that we have are sufficient for the current state of the airport and the types of aircraft that are flying in and out of there. To even go one step further, there's a special type of firefighting foam that you have to have for specific events like you'd have at the airport, and we do have that foam. We don't carry it on the truck, but it's literally right next to the truck. In the event that a call comes in at the airport, we can easily, literally grab the foam and take it with us. The combination of Rescue One and Rescue Two and Engine Three, those would be the three main apparatus that'd be dealing with any accidents there, and they'd be supplemented by the tanker trucks. And with the new FBO coming in, and once you get your full infrastructure project built out there, you'll also have sewer and water lines run out to that part of the airport right now. But yes, the airport as it sits right now is covered adequately with the apparatus that we have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other comments? Mr. Wallace?
You said you've grown from 49 to 60. Is that an optimal amount? Is it enough? Do you wish you had a lot more?
We were, we were joking about that number before, because I've always asked people, you ask our membership, we need to grow. We always need to grow. Okay, we've done that. What's the number? I have no clue. I think for us, a truly, truly healthy number for the city and for the organization is, and I should look this up, I need to find, there's a formula that specifically is out there to tell you, the size of your town for volunteer department, X amount of people. And I don't want to misquote the number, but I want to say that it is in the ballpark of, I think it's 500 to 1. Don't quote me on that number, though. I could be way off on that number. But for me, and looking forward to where we want to be at the end of this year from our membership perspective, I would like to be at about 85 members total. For us, one of the most incredible things, and we're working towards it, is ultimately, what is the pinnacle of achievement for a volunteer fire department? Is it the two minutes? Is it X amount of calls covered? Is it tools and equipment that you have? What is the pinnacle for volunteer success and achievement? And for me, I look at it in the perspective of, can the volunteer department provide staffing? Not paid, but be volunteer and provide staffing for the city? Because if we can achieve that and demonstrate that, that's an achievement. That's not something to shake a stick at. What does that number look like? Lots of discussion goes into that number, because it comes down to how many people do you have on shift per day? And that becomes a very expensive question very quick, even if you are volunteer, because you'll just have such a colossal amount of people. You have just wear and tear, tools and equipment. The PPE's already a monster, and it's going to be just even bigger and scarier. And that's the true question is, what does that number look like? I have an idea, and I think it's something that we have truly need to hammer out in our strategic plan, because again, it makes it so much easier for our organization to plan, but also for the city to say, oh, okay, here's your goal. This is what the goal looks like. This is the intent of the goal. This is, you can build the whole program from there. You can go all the way from funding and all the way to just basic maintenance, wear and tear, and operations off of that, once you determine what that number is. And again, where do you want the organization?
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And I do want to say, too, that we, as a city, are certainly appreciative, because we too recognize that you are all volunteers, just like our commissions, our boards, volunteers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.